To order the city council meeting for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for April the 12th, 2021. In a moment, you'll see the American flag come on your screen. And when it does, if you would please stand as you are able and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The clerk, please call the roll of the members. Denise Hoppy.
Present.
Judy Hutchinson.
Present.
Zachary Urban.
Present.
Rachel Haltine.
Present.
Amanda Weaver.
Here.
Corey Stites.
Here.
Leah Dozeman.
Here.
Valerie Nosler Beck.
He's just coming onto the meeting right this second. Sorry.
Mr. Mayor, when Ms. Nosler Beck comes online, we are all here. Okay, I see Ms. Nosler Beck here. So thank you very much. We have three proclamations this evening. Our first proclamation is Child Abuse Prevention Month. And to receive that, we have Jennifer Kemp's Special Events Associate with Ralston House, and I want to thank her for being here tonight. Whereas every child deserves to grow up in a safe, nurturing environment, free from harm and fear. All children do not receive appropriate care. In fact, too many children become victims at the hands of abusive perpetrators. And it is up to us as a community to tirelessly work to end through awareness and action. Every responsible person will agree that even one abused child is too many. And whereas, the month of April has been designated nationally as Child Abuse Prevention Month. At this time, we encourage all Wheat Ridge community members to join in renewing our commitment to preventing child abuse and learning what we can do to promote the safety and well-being of children. And whereas Wheat Ridge has designated as dedicated individuals and organizations who work daily to counter the problem of child abuse and help parents obtain the assistance they need. And whereas, our community is stronger when all community members become aware of child abuse prevention and become involved in supporting parents to raise their children in a safe and nurturing environment. And whereas, effective child abuse prevention programs such as Ralston House succeed because of partnerships among families, social service agencies, schools, religious and civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. And whereas, all community members, community agencies, faith organizations, and businesses will work to increase their efforts to support families. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Bud Starker, Mayor of the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, do hereby proclaim the month of April, 2020, to be Child Abuse Prevention Month, and witness her of in this 12th day of April, 2021. And I would like to, to thank Ms. Kemp's for joining us. Is there anything you'd like to say at this time?
No, just thank you so much, Mayor, and thank you to the city. You'll see the garden on display at the police department, and we really appreciate all the support you provide this month.
Well, thank you very much. We really appreciate the work that you do in, in keeping our kids safe and turning into great adults. So thank you so much. Our next proclamation is Sexual Abuse Awareness Month. And to receive that, we have Candace Coolidge, the Executive Director of Porchlight Family Justice Center. Whereas, every day, men, women, and children across Colorado suffer the pain and trauma of sexual assault. And whereas, sexual violence affects individuals of all ages, backgrounds, and circumstances. And whereas, this crime occurs far too frequently, goes unreported far too often, and leaves long-lasting physical and emotional scars. And whereas, during National Sexual Awareness Assault Awareness Month, we recommit ourselves not only to lifting the veil of secrecy and shame surrounding sexual violence, but also to raise awareness, expanding support for victims, and strengthening our response. And whereas, as a nation, we share the responsibility for protecting each other from sexual assault, supporting victims when it does occur, and bringing perpetrators to justice. And whereas, at the state level, we must work to provide necessary resources to victims of every circumstance, including medical attention, mental health services, relocation, and housing assistance, and advocacy during the criminal justice process. And whereas, Colorado communities can come together to increase awareness about sexual violence, decrease its frequency, hold offenders accountable, support victims, and heal lives. Now therefore, be it resolved, I Bud Starker, Mayor of the City of Wheat Ridge, do hereby declare the month of April, 2021, as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And further recognize April 28th, 2021, as Colorado Denim Day, encouraging Wheat Ridge residents to wear denim to show their support for the victims of sexual assault and highlight this issue in our community. And witness thereof, in this 12th day of April, 2021, Bud Starker, Mayor. And I'd like to, to thank Candace Coolidge for joining us tonight. Ms. Coolidge, is there something you'd like to say?
Just briefly.
Please continue.
One in third, one in three women and one in four men will experience sexual violence in their lifetime. Sexual violence affects us all, from survivors to family members to neighbors, friends, and the community as a whole. To those of you who have shared your stories and those of you who have not, please know, we support you. Your community supports you. Your community has resources to support you. Many of those services are here at Porchlight, Jefferson and Gilpin Counties' brand-new Family Justice Center. Porchlight is a collaboration of service providers in one location, helping survivors on their journey to hope and healing. We are honored to accept the proclamation and thankful to the City of Wheat Ridge for its dedication to survivors and commitment and support of Porchlight. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much for being here. Thank you very much for your, the work that you and your agency do to make our community safer and healthier. And congratulations on your new Porchlight Center. I haven't had a chance to see that, but I'm looking forward to, to coming. I know it was a long time coming, and I know you've done a great job. So thank you very much for bringing that. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you very much.
Our third presentation is for National Crime Victim Rights Week. And I would like to invite Sin Chapman, Executive Director of Victim Outreach Incorporated, to join us to receive the proclamation. Whereas, the Victims' Rights Movement has resulted in the passage of laws at the local, state, and federal levels that establish essential rights for victims. And whereas, Crime Victims' Rights Acts passed here in Colorado and at the federal level have provided victims with ways to participate meaningfully throughout the criminal justice process. And whereas, the rights of crime victims are best protected when all participants in the criminal justice process, not only victims, are appropriately educated about victims' rights. And whereas, supporting victims of crimes is crucial to the US justice system because our support honors the experiences of victims and allows them to find autonomy and empowerment through achieving self-defined goals. And whereas, we must help victims assess the justice, assistance, and support their needs to, they need to rebuild their lives. And whereas, the accomplishments of the Victim Rights Movement achieved through compassion and collaboration and built on the courageous advocacy of individual victims and their families across the country inspire us, inspire in us hope for future progress and greater healing. And whereas, we are determined to respond to crime and violence by helping victims find not only support, recovery, and justice, but also a sense of hope for their future. And whereas, National Crime Victims' Rights Week provides an opportunity to recommit, ensuring that equitable, appropriate, and trauma-informed services are offered to all victims of crime. And whereas, the City of Wheat Ridge is hereby dedicated to strengthening victims and survivors in the aftermath of crime, building resilience in our communities and our victim service providers, and bringing hope and healing to all victims and survivors. Now therefore, I Bud Starker, Mayor of the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of April 18 through 24, 2021, as Crime Victims' Rights Week, and reaffirm the city's commitment to creating a victim service and criminal justice response that assists all victims of crime, and to express our sincere gratitude and appreciation for those community members, victim service providers, and criminal justice professionals who are committed to improving our response to all victims of crime so that they may find relevant assistance, support, justice, and peace. And witness thereof, in this 12th day of April, 2021, Bud Starker, Mayor. And I would like to invite Ms. Chapman. Would you have a few words to say to us?
Thank you so much, Mayor. And we want to thank the City of Wheat Ridge and of course, you for this important recognition. We really appreciate our partnership with you. On Saturday, the 24th, we would ask you to join us at 11:00 AM for the annual Courage Walk. It's virtual this year, but you can go to our website, Victim Outreach Incorporated, and follow along live with the stream there. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for joining us. And thank you very much for the work that you do in our community. It's, it's vital to keep our citizens safe, both, both physically and mentally and emotionally. And we appreciate your work. So thank you very much. And that, I believe, pardon me, includes our proclamations. And we will go to approval of minutes. Counselors, in your package, you have study session notes of March 15, 2021, and city council minutes of March 22nd, 2021. Are there any corrections to the, to either of these minutes? Seeing none, we'll let the minutes stand as presented. We are now at our, at the approval of the agenda. Are there any, are there any modifications to the agenda? We will let the agenda stay as presented. We are now at our citizen's right to speak. Citizens may speak on any matter, not on the agenda, for a maximum of three minutes under citizen's right to speak. We will bring you into the meeting. If you would raise your hand in the Zoom format, which is located at the bottom of your screen, if you will click on the participant icon at the bottom, you will see an icon that says raise hand. And if you will raise your hand, we will bring you into the meeting. When you, when you join us, if you would please give us your first name and your last name, if you would please spell your last name for the record and give your address, we would appreciate that. Up to three speakers may aggregate their time for, for a total of nine minutes for one speaker. If you wish to avail yourself of this feature, would you please give us the, the other two speakers whose time you are acquiring to make it nine minutes? So I think that's all of the preliminary matters on this. I will go to Ms. Scheck and see if anyone has their hand raised in the Zoom format.
Yes, Mayor, we have Jessie, Jeannette, or Janette, and then with Lynette Namba on deck.
Okay. Ms. Je, Mr. Ms. Jeannette, if you would like to, to speak, please do.
Yes, awesome. Thank you so much. My name is Jessie Jeannette, J E N N E T T. You said my address, right? Sorry.
Address, please.
Okay, 125 South Hoyt Street. I'm actually in Lakewood, Colorado. But good evening. And I want to thank you all for your commitment and dedication to the people of Wheat Ridge, especially younger constituents like myself. I grew up in Lakewood, but also played lacrosse for Wheat Ridge, and so this area is my home for sure. I am actually coming to testify on the, the first item, which is the tobacco retail licensing ordinance that's being proposed. Yeah.
If you would like to speak on that item, we're going to, we're going to take testimony on that item when it, when it comes up. It is a public hearing, so I would want your testimony included in the public hearing.
Is that just waiting after this, then?
Just wait after this. When we get to that agenda item number one, I will call for comment. And we're happy to, happy to take your comments at that time on that item.
Okay, perfect. Thanks so much. Sorry, I was real eager.
That's okay. I'm glad to have you here, and we look forward to hearing from you. Ms. Scheck, our next speaker.
We have Deanne.
Okay, Deanne, if you would like to introduce yourself and give us your address, we'll go from there.
Deanne, can you unmute? There we go.
There you are. You're on there. Please, continue.
Okay, my name is Deanne Thurman. I live at 4690 Independence Street, Wheat Ridge, Colorado. Been a resident of Wheat Ridge most of my life, and I'm concerned about the I-70 Kipling Corridor problem. And I would like to have it addressed. It's a serious problem for all of the residents in the area, the crime, the cars being broken into, the drug trafficking that's going on over there, the homeless issue, the trash issue. It's, it's a really big black eye on the city of Wheat Ridge. When people are driving through Wheat Ridge, they have to see that. And the first thing they're thinking is, I don't want to have a business right here, and I don't want to live here. So it seems like only the inner parts of Wheat Ridge are being addressed. And, and the people on the outskirts of Wheat Ridge were being forgotten and were being ignored. And, and we're, we're fed up.
Okay, is that, thank you very much for your comments. I know that we will have more discussion on this in our City Managers Matters at the end of our, at the end of our meeting. I thank you very much for coming and, and letting us know about this topic.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Scheck, our next speaker.
Thank you, Mayor. We have Guy.
Good evening. It's Guy, Guy Namiach, N A H M I A C H, 3650 Ward Road in Wheat Ridge. I just wanted to thank really, truly the city staff and elected officials that came out last Tuesday to Right Coast Pizza to, I guess I didn't do a lot of bartending, but we raised about $500. That's going to go to Jane Johnson's Work Experience Program at Wheat Ridge High. I think that program is actually going to be more of service to us with, I think, with COVID, less people heading out to college and just literally trying to find a way to make a living right after high school. So I am really happy to have raised that money, but I love the participation from the city. You guys came out in droves. And the next one I'm inviting you is again, the first Tuesday of next month, which will be Cinco de Gallo. So I think it'll be a lot of fun. Come out in droves and have fun with us. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. I hope you'll have the drovers there when, when we're out in droves. So thank you very much for, for these announcements. Ms. Scheck, our next speaker.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We have Jerry DiTullio.
All right, Mr. DiTullio.
Good evening, Jerry DiTullio. I live at 32nd and Newland, D I T U L L I O. Thanks for having this public comment. I wanted to, you know, the Wheat Ridge is a tree city USA, and we've had a lot of damage to our urban forests over the last five to 10 years with spring storms and fall storms. And I wanted to really thank Councilman Amanda Weaver for actually bringing up the tree program again, a grant program. He's done a great job this year and last year, commercial properties, to help them with the COVID pandemic and having the grant program for those businesses. And I think that with the tree grant program, it would benefit private property and citizens of Wheat Ridge. And really, the grant program would be similar to what the White, or similar to what the city did with the Committee to Award Grant for businesses in Wheat Ridge. So I think that it would be definitely easy to start the program as a pilot program, get on a study session and discuss it. When it came up before, there was council members, Hoppy and a few others were in favor of it. And I saw when Amanda, Councilor Weaver asked for the consensus, though it's actually more. So I think that this council is going to be more proactive in cleaning up and beautifying the city. And the main thing is, besides being a tree grant replacement program for dead trees, you know, we have a lot of new people moving into the city, and those folks are fixing their properties up. And what's one more expense to have to remove a bunch of dead trees, especially if they're 20, 30, 40 years old. So this grant program would assist them, just like we assisted the commercial businesses during the pandemic. So I'm asking that you could at least look at funding it with 25, $50,000, that'd be a matching grant program. So basically, there'd be an investment by the private property owner, similar to also when we did the rebate on the roofing permits a few years ago when I was mayor. Basically, after filling out that quick application, make a few pictures of the dead tree, get an estimate from a tree trimmer, have them do the work, and you submit the receipt for reimbursement. But nothing is paid upfront. But you know that. I mean, we have a couple of people on the business district, and I think some other council members were on the committee to support those small businesses. So I'm more than willing to help and promote it. And if you need volunteers to help with the properties, the property owners, the citizens, I'm willing to go out and do the legwork. So keep in touch, and I appreciate all the work you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DiTullio. Ms. Scheck, additional speakers in the queue.
Mayor, we don't have anyone with their hands up, but I have a caller I've unmuted, just in case they would like to speak.
Okay, if you're, if you're calling and would like to speak, please unmute your phone now and introduce yourself and, and give us your address. We'll go from there.
Hello?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Carmen Choice, and I live at 10877 West 55th Lane in Arvada. And I would like to second a request for council to address the I-70 and Kipling issue. I have spoken with Leah Dozeman this week. She was absolutely wonderful and very receptive. I spoke with Officer Brian Gross this week. He was actually at the intersection, working. Incredible guy. Have nothing but really, really nice things to say about him. And I would just like a response from you, Mr. Mayor, and council, about what your plans are to clean up that area. I appreciate your time, and thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much for calling, Ms. Choice. As I indicated earlier, we will be talking about that during the city councils or the city managers' matters right after our third agenda items. So if you'll stand by, we will be addressing that I-70 and Kipling Corridor. Ms. Scheck, are there additional callers in the queue?
No, Mayor, I don't see any other hands raised.
Okay, let me give one more announcement. If you'd like to speak, under citizen's right to speak on any item not on the agenda, now is your opportunity. If you would please raise your hand in the Zoom format, we will bring you into the meeting. No one, no one additional?
No.
Okay, we will close our, no, okay, we will close our citizen's right to speak and move on to our regular agenda. We have no consent agenda items. Our first item of business is item number one. Ms. Haltine, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce Council Bill Number 042021, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, Amending Chapter 11, Licenses, Permits, and Miscellaneous Business Regulations, with the addition of new Article 15 regulating tobacco product retail licenses and conforming changes in connection therewithin. At issue, tobacco and youth vaping continue to be on the rise in Wheat Ridge and Jefferson County. The City of Wheat Ridge does not currently regulate its tobacco retailers. The purpose of this ordinance is to create licensing regulation for tobacco retailers.
Thank you. This is a, an ordinance on second reading. It is a public hearing. It is not quasi judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing. And Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mary Ann Schilling, our Assistant to the City Managers here. She's been working on this ordinance with the help of Jefferson County Public Health.
Okay, Ms. Schilling.
Great, thank you. Let me pull up my screen here. All right. I am here tonight to talk about Council Bill for 2021. It's on second reading here for tobacco retail licensing. So tonight, we are going to be discussing the prior action, how we got here tonight. I'm going to give an ordinance overview to go over what's covered in the ordinance. And then we'll talk a little bit about the administration of this ordinance and what the rollout will look like. So first, our prior action. If you look at the dates, you can tell that this has been almost two years in the making. So we've been, we've been working on this for a while now. We first presented in August of 2019. We had Jefferson County Public Health give an overview to city council. I returned in December 2019, kind of gave an overview of some of the items that council could consider, and they provided consensus to return with an ordinance. And then between December 2019 and then November 2020, when we returned again, the state passed House Bill 1001, which, you know, and generally made it so that the age of tobacco purchase would be 21. And now we came back in March 2021 to, to you all, and we had Council Bill 042021 passed on first reading. So as we first start through this ordinance overview, I do want to basically give a couple definitions that are just important for me to point out, and then a couple that are just kind of common questions. And so the arms-length transaction is one that we get that people don't necessarily know what that means. So I just wanted to cover that one first. What it basically means is that it's a business deal where buyers and sellers are acting independently without one party influencing the other. And this is referenced in Section 11239 as with regards to licenses being non-transferable. The second one here is tobacco products. And so the tobacco products means any product which contains, is made from, or derived from tobacco, or used to deliver nicotine, synthetic nicotine, or other substances intended for human consumption. This does include electronics, booking devices as well. And then finally, we included youth-oriented facilities as a definite definition here because we included parks and playgrounds, and I did want to point that out to council. So we had youth-oriented facilities as parks, playgrounds, and any city-owned recreation facility. And this does include any future city recreation facility as well. Some of the important requirements that we want to go over is that this tobacco retail license would also require a city business license, and that the age of purchase and sale is included in this. And so we have the 21 age, which was included in the state regulation. And then the regulation for the sale of tobacco products is 18, and that was a direction that was provided by council in the December 2019 City Council meeting. We have that the self-service displays are prohibited. And so that just means that they're not generally accessible to the public. They're behind a counter. They're locked up. So they're not in a vending machine. But I would like to point out that specialty shops are exempted from this particular requirement. For the limits on license eligibility, we do limit it so that it can only exist at a fixed location. So no delivery is available for our tobacco retailers. And then we do limit where proximity to school and youth-oriented facilities. And so that means that no new tobacco retailers can be within 1,000 feet of a school or youth-oriented facility. However, as we've discussed previously, we have grandfathered in those that are already existing and are in good standing as of the effective date. However, as was recommended by City Council, we did include a provision that should a retailer lie dormant for over a year, they would no longer be grandfathered in. So a little detail on the licensing piece, we will have a simple application form. So it'll be pretty straightforward, a business name, location, contact information, business license number, you know, certifying that they know all the regulations that are required. The fees that we were the council provided a direction on during the most recent meeting was that new, the first time that you apply for your tobacco retail license, it'll be $300. And then for the years following, it will be $250. However, we want to be business friendly. And so one of the things that we would like to pursue is that for businesses that have their application in by the effective date, we would like that to be effective throughout 2021 and have it roll all the way through 2022. So that would mean that the first tobacco retail license renewal date would actually be effective January 1, 2023. So we're hoping to get 18 months out of the first application for the tobacco retail license. For the review of the application, we anticipated about 30 days, which is pretty typical. And then for the denial of the application, there's really only two reasons that they would be denied for the business isn't in good standing. They don't have an active business license. They've had their tobacco retail license revoked in the last two years. Or they're not eligible. They're a new tobacco retailer, and they're within 1,000 feet of a school. So those are the the pretty common reasons why they would not exist. And then for the term of the license, aside from that first 18-month period that we're recommending, each term is going to be one year, and it's going to correspond with our business license so that they can be renewed in parallel. And so they will last from January 1 through December 31 of each year. For the compliance piece, Wheat Ridge Police is going to be doing two compliance checks per year. However, I do want to point out that since if the effective date is decided to be July 1, we'd recommend doing one compliance check this year because it's only a six-month period, and then starting two every year from there on out. You can see the penalty structure here. So the first violation would be a fine of $500. The second violation, and to be clear, these violations are within a three-year period. The second violation would be that the license is suspended for seven days. The third is that the license is suspended for 30 days. The fourth would be that the license is suspended for one year. And then the fifth is that the license is revoked and that you, the retailer is ineligible to apply for the next two years. A couple other things I do want to point out. The first is that we did make a couple of minor amendments in Chapters 9 and 16 of the municipal code. And so the basically just to update the age of purchase to 21 and to expand the reference from cigarettes to tobacco products in some areas. And the second area that I do want to point out in particular is that the exemption for tobacco specialty businesses. The proposed policy as it stands does not impact the smoking at cigar businesses, and so that that would stay the same. However, the tobacco retail businesses right now are exempted from the self-service part, but they're they're not exempted from any other area. And the reason for that is really at the recommendation of Jefferson County Public Health. And really, there's there's no other communities in Colorado with exemptions in their licensing ordinances for certain tobacco retailers. And so we do think that it makes sense for that to to be consistent with what our what our peers are doing. And the reason I'm bringing this up is because the topic of exemption for tobacco retailers was brought up in the last meeting. And so I just want to make sure that's that's clear what we're what we're considering. And then finally, for the administration of this program, we are anticipating an implementation date of July 1. And that means that the program would be rolled out no later than June 1. And that we would we would assume that the tobacco retailer is compliant if they've had their application submitted by July 1. We have a plan for notification to tobacco retailers, and that would include a letter, a copy of the ordinance, deadlines, FAQs, the application, very similar to what we've done recently with our massage, our massage ordinance. So we have some really good examples to follow from recent from recent work. And then we'll also have a communication plan, which would include, you know, creating a webpage specifically dedicated to tobacco retail licensing. We'd be sending out two mailings and an email. The mailer would be going out no later than June 1. We would be able to, with this timing, we'd be able to include it in the next Connections newsletter, which would be going up mid-May. We'd also be putting in Mayor's Matters and press releases, and we'd be working with the Jefferson County PIO for messaging, and our PRI is already in touch and are prepared to move forward when that time comes. So that is all that I have for the this tobacco retail license ordinance. I am joined tonight by our Administrative Services Director, Ally Shek, our Division Chief, Jim Lorenz, and Jefferson County Public Health Tobacco Policy and Strategic Initiatives Team Lead, Ellen Stern, who are available to help answer any questions that you may have as well. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And if, before we go to questions from council, I would like to open the floor up to citizen comment on this issue. If you'd like to speak on this agenda item number one, this is your opportunity. If you would please raise your hand in the Zoom format, we'll bring you into the meeting. And similar to our our request on citizen comment earlier, if you give us your name and your last name, first name and last name, please spell your last name and give us your address for the record, then you may speak on this issue. Is there anyone that's raised their hand that would like to speak on this issue at this time?
Yes, to start, we have Jessie, followed by Jeanette, followed by Shaylan. So Jessie, Lynette, Shaylan.
Okay, so Jessie, please go ahead, come on into the meeting, unmute yourself, and give us your name and spell your last name and your address, and then you're ready to roll.
Perfect. Hi again, everyone. My name is Jessie. Sorry, I think I cut out. Jessie, Jeanette, my last name is J E N N E T T. I live on 125 South Hoyt Street in Lakewood, Colorado. I just want to say good evening and appreciate you all for your commitment and dedication to the people of Wheat Ridge, especially like younger constituents or younger constituents like myself. I am currently a graduating student senator at MSU Denver and have been active across Jeffco and Denver advocating for and with young people on various social justice issues. But tobacco use has a very special place in my heart because that is where I started on my journey of activism at Lakewood High School when I was a freshman. And I've actually experienced firsthand the the access to tobacco that young people have. I served as a minor tobacco inspector, and I've helped do compliance checks across Jeffco, Douglas, and various mountain counties. And I got to tell y'all that from the time that I was 16 to 18, I had absolutely no problem accessing tobacco products. And at the time, I was actually not able to purchase the like more traditionally used products of, you know, vape and flavored products that young people are more likely to use. I had to buy cigarettes. And so I just wanted to anecdotal, provide an anecdote towards the data that it is super accessible for young folks and that no matter if you're in person or virtually, y'all can see that students have access to tobacco products and they are using it. And so I just wanted to express my support for for this ordinance and appreciation that folks are trying to intervene and and promote health equity. And just give that kind of experience. And I've also really firsthand experienced the exploitation from tobacco companies in the ways that young folks are specifically targeted, especially those with marginalized backgrounds. So I just appreciate the kind of gaps that this is working to close and kind of accountability that is built within it. Some of the greatest regrets that I've heard from older tobacco users either around me or just generally in my community is that they wish that they had never started. And I truly believe that by closing these gaps, it kind of alleviates that access and gives young folks the opportunity to never even start a bad habit that they will possibly regret in their future. But that is essentially all that I wanted to touch on. I'm definitely willing to answer any questions if folks have them. But again, appreciate the time and support this initiative on tobacco retail licensing.
Well, thank you very much for joining us, the council tonight. We appreciate your inputs. Ms. Shek, our next speaker.
Thanks, Mayor. We have Lynette, followed by Shaylan. I might be murdering that last second name, but Lynette to start.
Okay, Lynette Nambe.
Hello, Mayor and Council. My name is Lynette Nambe. Last name spelled N A M B A. I lived in District 1 at 2977 Reed Street. I am a senior community health specialist at Kaiser Permanente and have been a resident of Wheat Ridge for 10 years. I'm here tonight in support of Council Bill for 2021 to license tobacco businesses in Wheat Ridge and to align local code with state and federal law regarding the sale of tobacco products to those who are age 21 and above. Kaiser Permanente also lends its support for your efforts to reduce youth tobacco use. I applaud your leadership and ask for your support of this policy that will help to reinforce tobacco prevention measures among teens in our community. And I want to highlight the critical component of the policy that proposes to set a 1,000-foot perimeter for any new tobacco retail licenses located near schools and youth-oriented locations, including parks, playgrounds, and the city rec center. By restricting the density and locations of tobacco retailers near schools and places where youth spend a lot of time, this can help to limit the perpetuation of social norms associated with tobacco use for young people and can limit tobacco use initiation. Studies have shown that high school smoking prevalence is associated with tobacco retail density near schools and stores near schools have greater exterior tobacco advertising. Research in Missouri and New York has shown that prohibiting tobacco retailers near schools would nearly eliminate income and race-based disparities in retailer density between neighborhoods. This evening, I hope that you will pass the measure as it is currently drafted. And if adopted, I encourage council to continue to monitor policy outcomes associated with the compliance checks that will soon be performed with retailers. The tobacco retail license is a foundational policy where additional policy levers can be pulled in the future based on trends that may be seen after implementation. And I believe it will be important for Wheat Ridge City Council to track indicators around youth tobacco use and retailer violations in order to continuously refine and improve the policy to ensure its effectiveness into the future. Thank you for your support.
Thank you very much for coming to talk with us this evening, Ms. Nambe. Ms. Shek, our next speaker.
Yes, Shaylan.
Yes, hi, I'm Shaylan Seving. Last name is S I E V I N G. And my address is 9661 West Chatfield Avenue. I'm actually in Littleton, but I'm the working nurse at Wheat Ridge High School. And I have come, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight. As a nurse, I am very concerned about youth tobacco use in Wheat Ridge, and I support the proposed ordinance, Council Bill 042021, to reduce underage access to tobacco and nicotine products. In my time of being a nurse, I specifically worked with a 16-year-old who admitted to vaping for the past year and admit that he did have an addiction to it. 99% of vapes contain high amounts of nicotine, as found in recent study by the Centers of Disease Control. This student in particular had stated multiple times that it was hard for him to stop vaping because of easy access in the neighborhood of buying vaping supplies and nicotine. The student on many occasions had stated that he tried to stop. However, he mentioned it's just easy to go to multiple gas stations and purchase supplies, which contributes to his addiction. Teenage brains continue to develop through 25 years of age. And as mentioned in December of 2020 by the Centers of Disease Control, nicotine harms the parts of the brain responsible for controlling attention, learning, mood, and impulse control. This ultimately leads to a change of the way the youth brain communicates, which then just ruins their brain cells from them performing these tasks efficiently. As a result, I strongly support the proposed ordinance because it raises the age of tobacco sales to 21, which is a proven policy strategy to keep harmful and addictive products like cigarettes, cigars, any cigarettes out of the reach of young people whose developing brains are being wired for lifelong habits. Requiring all tobacco retails in Wheat Ridge to be subject to the licensing policy and to pay a reasonable fee will lead to a comprehensive approach to compliance checks and the reassurance that retailers are not selling tobacco products to young people under 21 years of age. Respectfully, I urge you to pass the policy as it is currently proposed. Thank you for the leadership to address youth tobacco use in our community, and thank you for your consideration of my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Seving. Ms. Shek, additional speakers in the queue?
Yes, Mayor, we have Jennifer.
Okay, Jennifer. I don't see Jennifer coming on.
Yeah, I'm working on that, Mayor. Jennifer's using an older version of Zoom, so she has to be promoted as a panelist.
But we will.
See if she joins.
Okay, sorry, I got kind of kicked out there.
There you go.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Yates, last name Y A T E S. I live at 3700 Miller Street in Wheat Ridge. I'd like to thank Mayor and Council for your dedication to protecting our youth and circling back to this issue of limiting access of nicotine products. As stated, when we started this process, we were encouraging Wheat Ridge to raise the legal age to 21. But thankfully, the state finally did that and passed that bill to raise the age to 21 for all of Colorado. And while the state has good intentions of completing two compliance checks per year with thousands of outlets, it's a big undertaking for the state and for any community. So I applaud your willingness to take that on. With your help, Wheat Ridge businesses that sell nicotine products will be held accountable, and this will save countless lives from nicotine addiction and the inevitable health problems that go along with any addiction years down the road. My daughter's been vaping since the beginning of high school, and I think she's quit now. She turned 18 in November, and I firmly believe that she would have been part of that open pipeline to her friends, her siblings, and to their friends. And while it's hard at this point in time to measure apples to apples because schools have been locked down due to COVID, I believe with my whole heart that next year, our freshmen will have a fighting chance to resist addiction to nicotine products because that open pipeline to our schools has been drastically reduced by raising that legal age and by regulating those businesses that sell nicotine products. So I firmly support those ordinance. I hope you pass it as is. I think it's good. It's strong, and it shows we care. And we sincerely thank you for protecting our kids and their futures.
Thank you for joining us, Ms. Yates, and your comments. We appreciate that. Ms. Shek, additional speakers in the queue?
Mayor, I know that Ms. Ellen Stern is with us on screen to help facilitate the discussion as she's been part of developing the ordinance with Ms. Schilling, but I believe she'd also like to speak.
Okay, Ms. Stern.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, member of the councils. It's really nice to see you again. I'm Ellen Stern with the Jefferson County Tobacco Prevention Initiative. I wanted to call your attention to a letter that our executive director sent in support of the ordinance before you tonight. And I just wanted to highlight a couple of points. First of all, as you all have heard from us on a number of occasions, you are making a big step right now towards tobacco prevention among our youth in Wheat Ridge, and we are really happy to support the ordinance. I do want to zoom out briefly and just highlight the systemic change that we hope licensing and raising the age of sales to 21 can do. Although cigarette smoking has declined significantly since 1964, disparities in tobacco use remain across groups defined by race, ethnicity, education, socioeconomic status, and across regions of the country. Higher smoking prevalence has been reported among people living in poverty, people who identify as LGBT, and people with mental health people who identify as LGBT, and people with mental health conditions and substance use disorders. With more than one in four youth in Jefferson County reporting that they are currently vaping, research is increasingly showing that youth who begin vaping may be four times more likely to go on to smoke conventional cigarettes. With this in mind, tobacco retail licensing is an effective policy intervention that can work to address those inequities by addressing how tobacco products are sold and marketed. In Wheat Ridge, this would include the work that you're doing in this ordinance to raise the age of sales to twenty-one in alignment with the new laws mentioned earlier, instituting twice per year checks to ensure compliance with the law and setting effective penalties um if underage sales do occur. And then also making sure that those one thousand foot buffer zones exist near schools and other youth-friendly uh locations like playgrounds for new licenses. All of these policy approaches can positively influence health equity in the long run. And health equity means that every young person in Wheat Ridge has the opportunity to reach their full health potential, regardless of any socially determined circumstance. The steps that you are taking tonight reflect a commitment to support not only youth tobacco prevention locally in the immediate term, but ultimately broader, long-term population health goals to reduce tobacco-related preventable death and disease. Thank you so much for your consideration of this really important public health priority, and I'm happy to answer questions during the dialogue tonight.
Thank you very much, Ms. Stern. Uh Ms. Check, is there anyone else with their hands raised in our uh citizen comment portion of the?
No, Mayor, but I just unmuted a couple of callers just in case.
Okay, if you are calling uh on the telephone and would like to speak on this agenda item number one, please unmute yourself and um uh ask to join our meeting, and we'll bring you into the meeting. Okay, I don't hear any callers on the telephone that wish to uh to speak under this item. Uh so I'm going to close our our uh public comment on this item and open it up to questions from council. Uh before I do, I would like to um go to our city attorney, Mr. Dahl. I understand that you may have uh a matter for us to um to take under consideration.
Yes, thank you, uh Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh there was mentioned earlier about the desire to have the uh first term for the first licenses issued uh run through calendar year twenty twenty-three. If that's, am I right about that? That's correct, twenty twenty-two.
Through twenty twenty-two, starting on twenty twenty-three.
Twenty twenty, okay, fine. Uh and so the the ones issued in this year in this calendar year twenty twenty-one would actually not expire until December of twenty twenty-two. And that's fine, that's easily done, but it will require that we insert a really small amendment into the ordinance, and I can point out where it is, and then when it's time for a motion, whoever's making the motion can add that or can ask me to restate it. But just for your knowledge, that would appear on page nine of the ordinance in section eleven dash two thirty-eight. So if we have that, it's in subsection A that calls out the term of the license for one year and shall expire in December thirty-one of each calendar year. So the easy fix is to add to that subsection a phrase, provided, however, the initial term for any license issued in calendar year twenty twenty-one shall extend until December thirty-one, twenty twenty-two. And that that solves that problem, creates a slightly larger term, but doesn't upset the the general calendar year system that you otherwise will have. So when it comes time for the motion to act on the on the ordinance after discussion, I can restate that, or whoever's making the motion can add that.
Uh thank you very much. Ms. Holtein will be making that motion, so we will make sure that when the motion gets made, she has the opportunity to get that wording.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then I will uh I will open the discussion uh i- in the public hearing to members of council. If you'd like to speak on this issue or have any questions for staff on this, please raise your hand, and I will call on you, Ms. Holtein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um I have two questions. One uh is so when we talked about this in the fall, we postponed this uh to now based on the proposed timing for House Bill twenty um one thousand one. And I'm just wondering if anyone has an update on uh what the status is of the um implementation of the state legislation about this?
I'm going to pass that over to Ms. Stern, who is in contact with the state regarding this topic.
Thank you for the question. Unfortunately, after reaching out to the Department of Revenue, they had no updates um and couldn't provide a timeline about whether or not it would be implemented July one as the legislature passed last year. As you will recall, last November when we spoke, they had paused rulemaking, so there hasn't been a stakeholder process or anything around that, and no fees have been collected as a result.
Thank you so much. Um then my second question, uh so the way this is written, we're, I I appreciate uh Ms. Schilling mentioning in her presentation that the one thousand foot restriction um also applies to future facilities. And I'm wondering, um does that does that work both ways? So it would limit, like, if we were to build a park, would we be restricted on places we could consider for park locations or schools based on existing licenses? I know the intent is to limit future licenses based on like if if a school's built, then that creates a new perimeter that new licenses come in, but are we creating a situation where we would be restricted on our sighting based on that?
I can answer that. Uh no, there's no restriction on the city's activities in creating parks, et cetera. If there is a, if there's a license, uh a licensed business that exists today that's within that thousand-foot limitation, there's the section in eleven two thirty-four D that says those are grandfathered and can continue. It goes on to say, as you have pointed out, I think, that to the extent a new school or new park is is created that would otherwise displace a license that was already in existence on the effective date of this ordinance, that license can continue, which is only fair, but it does not go on to prevent or limit the city's rights in any way to locate its facilities or youth facilities in any location of this.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions or um on this of staff? Okay, before I close the public hearing and ask for motion, is there any other uh any other questions that that anyone has for staff? Okay, then I'm going to close the public hearing. And Ms. Holtein, a motion is in order, and please feel free to reach out to Mr. Dahl for any additional wordage with respect to the item on page nine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um so to do that, uh Mr. Dahl, do you prefer I ask for it now, or um do you want me just to reference you in my in my motion?
Uh I think what you can do is this, uh I'll repeat the language again, and when you make your motion to approve the uh ordinance, you can say with the amendment to section eleven dash two thirty-eight A as read by the city attorney. And if you plug that into your motion, then uh we'll have a good record of it. I'll work with the C clerk's office to make sure that language is inserted. So um if if um you're ready, I'll go ahead and read that language again, and it'll match up with what you're about to say in your motion.
Sounds good.
The additional language would be added at the end of existing uh section eleven dash two thirty-eight A on term. And the language would be comma, provided, however, the initial term for any license issued in calendar year twenty twenty-one shall extend until December thirty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. Uh I move to approve Council Bill number oh four twenty twenty-one, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, amending chapter eleven licenses, permits, and miscellaneous business regulations with the addition of new article fifteen regulating tobacco product retail licenses and conforming changes in connection therewith on second reading net at take effect on July first, twenty twenty-one, with the amendment to section eleven two thirty-eight A as read by the city attorney.
We have a a motion and a second by Ms. Weaver. Is there a discussion on the motion? Uh Ms. Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to give a quick thank you to um Jennifer and Lynette for their persistence in this almost two-year battle that they've been fighting for, this issue that's important to them. And I met with Lynette uh about a year and a half ago, and just wanted to say thank you for your continued support and persistence.
Uh thank you. Additional um comments in this whole team?
Thank you. Uh I just want to echo Ms. Hoppy's thanks. Uh I I know that several of the speakers tonight have been working on this both um professionally and as passionate citizens of our city, and it's uh an issue that's really important to me, and I'm I'm glad we've gotten to this point and are are moving it forward. And um you know, and I also want to thank staff. I had more questions, and and most of them were answered by the time the staff presentation was done, but this is a a complicated piece of uh policy that we're moving forward tonight, and um I think it really reflects our community values about valuing the the health and safety of our youth, and I just want to thank everyone, especially um Jesse. Your your work uh was really inspiring to hear about. I really appreciate you coming and sharing your story. Thank you.
Additional comments from council? Okay, hearing none. Uh all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand in the screen, and will the clerk, please record the votes?
I can't find eight hands up, but it looks to me like, oh, there it is. Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously, eight to nothing.
Okay, thank you very much. I'd like to uh thank all of our speakers for coming forward. Uh great comments from everyone, and I I want to to say that uh uh when I was first elected to uh City Council back in the twenty twelve or twenty thirteen, Ms. Namba uh came to my office and and or or we met to discuss this issue, and uh and I'm glad that we probably uh finally got this across the finish line, and I remember when when the students from Wheat Ridge High School came and joined us in in council chambers to talk on this. So sometimes these take, these uh things take a while to happen, but we're glad to have this over the finish line. So thank you all very much. Okay, we will go to uh agenda item number two. Uh Mr. Urban, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh Resolution number fifteen dash twenty twenty-one. A resolution approving first amendment to the enhanced sales tax incentive program agreement with Grammy's goodies extending the commencement date from November first to November, or sorry, from November first twenty twenty to November first twenty twenty-one.
Uh thank you very much. Uh Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
Uh we don't really have a a a presentation. Uh Mr. Steve Arts here and Vicky, the owner of Grammy's Goodies, is is are both here this evening. Um Grammy's Goodies just is uh requesting an extension of their S-step so that they get the full five years of future sales tax increment from the improvements that they are making at at their at their restaurant.
Okay, and and excuse me, I should I should have introduced this as a public hearing.
Oh, yeah.
And I would like to open the public hearing. Um so um
But repeat what I said, we don't have a presentation this evening, but uh Steve Art or Economic Development Manager and uh Vicky, the owner of Grammy's Goodies, is here. Um they're asking for an extension of their S-step agreement um for another year so that they can still realize five years of future sales tax increment. Um COVID delayed many, many things in our life, and uh COVID delayed the improvements to their restaurants, so um staff supports of extending this for one year um so that they can finish their uh improvements and um realize sales tax increment they hope to generate.
Okay, thank you very much, and my apologies. Uh before we go to questions of the council on this, I'd like to open this up to um to public comment. If there's anyone from the public who would like to speak on agenda item number two, now is your opportunity. If you'd please unmute yourself and uh ask to join the meeting, we will bring you into the meeting. Ms. Check, do we have anyone in the queue to speak on this item?
No, I don't see any hands up, Mayor.
Okay, uh thank you. I will close our our uh citizens' comment on this and open it up to council. Are there any questions uh that you have for um Mr. Art or the applicant? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and Mr. Urban, a motion is in order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Resolution fifteen dash twenty twenty-one. A resolution approving a first amendment to an enhanced sales tax incentive program agreement with Grammy's goodies extending the commencement date from November first, twenty twenty-two, November first, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, I have a second from uh Mr. Stites. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand in front of the screen, and will the clerk please record the votes?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much. Um glad to have Grammy's goodies here. I had lunch there on Saturday. Great uh great meal. We will go to agenda item number three. Ms. Dozeman, would you please introduce this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number sixteen dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution approving a permit for a noise source pursuant to section sixteen dash one oh three dot C three of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws for Rocky Mountain Bottle Company and Making Findings in Connection Therewith. The issue, uh City of Wheat Ridge Code of Laws permit a permit a business in the industrial zone district which operates in noise source to apply to the city manager for a permit for a different decibel level than set forth in the code. Rocky Mountain Bottling Company submitted an application to the city manager requesting an adjusted allowable sound level associated with the new furnace oxygen plant portion of the RMBC facility.
Uh thank you. Uh this is a resolution of the council. Uh Mr. Goff, do we have a any presentation on this item?
We do. I'll start off and introduce um our guests this evening. Um but on August twenty-fourth of last year, council approved an ordinance uh concerning the regulation of noise, which established um noise standards for industrial properties. Uh the ordinance also established a permit process to allow existing businesses in industrial zone-owned properties to apply for permit for a different decibel level um than set forth in the ordinance. Uh Rocky Mountain Bottle Company has submitted a permit application requesting a different decibel level. Um we are ultimately recommending approval of the permit with conditions that as outlined in the resolution, which pertain primarily to uh measurement standards for the noise, future noise mitigation requirements if needed, and future noise level monitor monitoring. Um we do have Andrew Truitt. Um he's with Barron's and Associates Environmental Noise Control. He's working on behalf of Rocky Mountain Bottle Company. Um he's he submitted the application on behalf of of RMBC, and uh he is here this evening to briefly um talk about their permit. I believe also Mr. Bob Hunt is also here. He's um uh their public information officer with Rocky Mountain Bottle Company. Andrew?
Please um please continue.
Uh good evening, everyone. Um Andrew Truitt speaking. Um I think as a matter of fact, um I believe Bob um had an opening statements uh that he wanted to make. Bob, did did you want to make some opening statements here? You might still be muted.
There we go. Okay, thank you. Excuse me, I was muted. Uh uh good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council and uh city manager golf. Thank you again for having us, and just wanted to say we appreciate you working with us uh through this journey of uh acoustical uh uh engineering and and changes. Uh we uh appreciate all the hard work of the council and uh the support of our neighbors that we continue to keep informed uh on the progress of our uh solution. Uh with that, I'm going to turn over to uh Andrew to share with you the details of the resolution. Thank you.
Uh good evening, everyone. My name is Andrew Truitt. I'm a senior engineer with Barron's and Associates Environmental Noise Control. Uh and this evening, I'm going to speak to you briefly uh in support of the noise variance before you. Um first and foremost, I want to do just kind of a a brief history lesson here because um obviously, this isn't the first time uh we uh RMBC and and Barron's have been before this board. Um and uh this has been an ongoing project with kind of new developments that have been discussed uh every time we've come in for you, and and this is just uh the the next round there. Um one thing that's been very consistent since the inception of this project um is uh the feedback that we've received both from the constituents and the neighbors around the project uh as well as city council was that uh we wanted to get back to the sound levels that existed prior to this new oxygen plant. That was a pretty consistent ask for this. It's that, hey, look, we understand RMBC has been there for several decades. Um what really changed things was this new oxygen plant, and so if we could get back to the sound levels that existed prior um to adding that oxygen plant, uh that would be an acceptable design target for this pro- uh project um and and acceptable resolution. that would be an acceptable design target for this project and acceptable resolution for everybody. And so what we had to do was determine, well, what is that magic number? What are those levels that need to be achieved in order to get there? And to do that, we did what's called an ambient sound level survey. In this case, ambient, that is kind of the day-to-day fluctuations of the sound levels of a given area. And so we need to understand what were those levels before oxygen plant existed and how do we measure that? So what we did was we actually deployed several sound level meters on the site. These were calibrated prior to use and follow all of the rules and regulations of both Wheat Ridge as well as both state and federal codes and ANSI standards, et cetera, et cetera. And we measured over several days. So we didn't just go out there and take a five-minute spot measurement. We didn't cherry pick the quietest day or the quietest night. We surveyed over several different days. And over the course of those several days, we observed three different shutdown periods of the oxygen plants in question. And so what I mean is literally the plant was shut down. That plant was shut down, I believe, for a minimum of several hours. And one of the shutdown periods actually was observed over a course of almost twelve hours. They're pretty significant shutdown periods. Once again, we wanted a good, large data set that was representative of both daytime and nighttime levels without that plant running so that we understood those are the sound levels that are being asked for here. Those are the levels that existed prior to adding that plant. And that's what needs to be our design targets to remedy this is this issue. What we found were that the logarithmic averages, both both daytime and nighttime of those ambient levels were actually already in excess of the newly adopted industrial noise limits. And this does happen from time to time and there's existing precedent for how to evaluate that and how to further resolve it. And what we did was we referenced both existing state and federal code. There are state industrial regulations as well as federal highway and other industrial regulations that go about this process. And what they do is they say, hey, you need to do an ambient sound level survey and figure out what are those background sound levels? Because if those background sound levels are ready or slightly higher than what you're trying to go for with a code, it can be very difficult to prove that you're actually below those limits. Because what you're going to do is you're going to go out to site, you're going to have a microphone and what you're going to be picking up is the day-to-day background levels. And if those levels are higher than what you're trying to hold somebody to, it can be very difficult to distinguish between the two. So those ambient levels need to be taken into consideration and need to kind of establish a new baseline goal there. And then additionally, there's a tolerance that is typically observed. And that tolerance allows for those day-to-day fluctuations to be observed. And once again, to make sure that what you're measuring and trying to prove is in fact, you know, the noise source in question and not just the day-to-day fluctuations of traffic, you know, neighborhood activities, so on and so forth. And so brass tacks, that is what we are proposing here today is just to make sure that we are in fact going back to those pre-oxygen plant ambient levels that are the day-to-day averages that we're seeing prior to even adding that. But that we understand that what those levels are and that proper consideration be given to those levels to make sure that what you're measuring is in fact the plant and not just those day-to-day fluctuations. So yeah, Bob and I are here to answer any questions you guys may have and I appreciate the opportunity to present.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hunt and Mr. Truitt. Before we go to questions of council, I want to open this up to members of the public to comment on this agenda item number three. If you would like to comment on this item, now is your opportunity. Please raise your hand in the Zoom format and we will bring you into the meeting. Ms. Shek, do we have anyone that has raised their hand in the Zoom format?
We don't, Mayor. I'm going to unmute a caller.
Okay, if you're a caller and would like to opine on this item, please unmute yourself and ask to join. We'll bring you into the meeting. So I will do one last call for public comment on this agenda item number three. Okay, anyone wishing to speak at this time, so I will close the public comment portion and open this up to questions from council. Do we have any questions from council? Ms. Nosler Beck?
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Andrew. Thanks, Bob. Wanted to just ask a little bit about, we've we've worked really closely with everyone on. Hi, Bob. Now I now I see you. We've worked with everyone on making sure that we're communicating with the neighbors that are impacted by the noise with this. This makes really good sense after you explained it, Andrew. But you know, I think this is going to take another bit of outreach to the neighbors so that they can understand that we're getting to a level that works because it is outside of those reasonable decibel levels that we had with the industrial permit. And so I'm wondering, you know, I think this makes great sense, like I said, but I think we need to make sure that we're we're doing the outreach to make sure that this is communicated to to the infected residents. Because I, as we have learned through this whole process, noise is, even if it shows something on the decibel reader, it it sounds different to everybody.
Yes, absolutely. Following this meeting, we'll do two things. One, send out a communication to our neighbors as we have been doing in the past. Not only sharing with them the explanation that Andrew provided, but also again, the timeline so they understand what the expectations are. And we'll continue to keep them apprised even, you know, after after the permitting process goes so that they know where we are in the process with construction.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add on to that maybe?
Yes, Mr. Goff.
And Ms. Nosler Beck, we also, as one of the conditions we we asked for in the permit was that there's a quarterly monitoring of the of the decibel readings for the first year to make sure that we're they're staying on track and so and that 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 will help with communication with the neighborhood too.
Thank you. Additional questions from council? Oh, Ms. Nosler Beck?
Me again. So the other just kind of update that I'd love to get from both Andrew and Bob is just where where we are in the process of the wall. Can we, are we, is it okay, Mayor, if we talk about that now too or not?
I believe it is, yes.
Andrew, you want to take that, given the fact that we have a next step following this in the coming Thursday?
Sure, yeah, that'd be fine. So yeah, there's obviously a lot of due diligence that needs to be exercised here, not only by by us, but by the city. And so after tonight, the the next step in that process is a review of the planned wall, that acoustical wall that we previously spoke about. We are moving forward with that or we'd like to move forward with that. But some of the final details need to be reviewed by the city and make sure that they're in line with everybody's standards and expectations. And so I believe that that meeting is scheduled to occur on Thursday, if I'm not mistaken. And pending a successful resolution, then we'll basically have the building spec approved to move forward with that.
And that's back, we also are getting everything staged in terms of ordering materials. I believe, Andrew, we spoke at the last council meeting and the fact that we've done some grading and and got the the pad prepared. So we're we're already, you know, moving forward as quickly as we can with some of the preliminary events that need to take place before construction.
Yeah, and Ms. Nosler Beck, it's my understanding is, yeah, if Planning Commission approves this on Thursday, they they'll be eligible to pull a permit the next day. And I think with the timeframe, they're they're thinking, I think, June-ish, June or July, the walls should be constructed.
Thank you, Ms. Nosler Beck. Do you have additional questions or does that does that cover all of your questions?
One, one last question, just because there wasn't a visual presentation. Do you mind just sharing with the public what the ambient decibel reading was without what that kind of average decibel reading was without any, when the when the plant was shut off?
Sure. Mr. Goff, would you like me to share the that resolution letter? It is contained with that or if you'd prefer to do that, that'd be fine as well.
Yeah, I have it. I have it up actually on my screen if that would be easier. If I have, I can pull it up here real quick.
Sure.
Okay, you all see that? This is this is the resolution you're talking about?
Yes, sir. Yep. Yeah. And so table two is the presentation of that data that was recorded. And as you can see, there were effectively four days that were surveyed to comprise that data set. That was eight fifteen of last year to eight nineteen. And we looked at both daytime and nighttime levels and then basically took a cumulative logarithmic average over those entire periods. And once again, those periods are representative of the three different shutdown events. So that is not a mixed value of with the plant and without the plant. That is exclusive to only the ambient levels that were observed when the oxygen plant was shut down.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
We're all decibel experts now. Thanks, Andrew. Thanks, Bob.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Nosler Beck. Any other questions from council? Okay, seeing none, I will go to from a motion is in order. Ms. Dozeman?
Thank you. I move to approve Resolution number sixteen dash twenty twenty-one. A resolution approving a permit for a noise source pursuant to section sixteen dash one oh three dot C three of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws for Rocky Mountain Bottle Company and Making Findings in Connection Therewith.
And a second by Mr. Urban. Is there any discussion on the motion? Ms. Dozeman?
I just wanted to thank Rocky Mountain Bottling Company for all of their hard work and and their communication. They are a prime example of what a good neighbor and good business is in this city. And it was wonderful to work with them throughout this entire process. They recognized the issue and and they worked closely with the with the residents and have been wonderful sending out correspondence to kind of let them know and keep them updated with with the whole process. So I just wanted to thank them for being such wonderful partners in all of this.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. Put it in the screen and will the clerk please record the votes?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. Okay, that will bring us to the end of the third agenda item and our regular business matters. We will now go to city managers' matters. Mr. Goff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have several updates this evening, so please bear with me. And we thought the Mayor Protem and I thought the meeting would be a lot shorter and I could get these updates in, but I'll be as quick as I can. So some good, great updates. First of all, our Wadsworth Improvement Project, we received final, final, final approval approval today from the Federal Highway Administration. And so the project is going to go out to bid on Wednesday. So huge step forward for that. So congratulations to staff for all their hard work on that. That's a huge step forward. Also want to talk about a potential urban renewal authority bond that they're considering. So to give a little bit of history on it, as you remember, we diverted approximately ten million dollars in in two E bond funds from the G Line Station project to the Clear Creek Crossing project to complete the hook ramps. And the agreement was that the the city would be reimbursed by the developer in the Longs Peak Metropolitan District of about ten million dollars. Unfortunately, we're probably not going to get paid back until probably late next year. So we took this to the Urban Renewal Authority and asked them if they would be interested in issuing a bond based off of property tax increment that is being generated in the I seventy Kipling Corridor area, specifically around the G Line Station. As you all know, there's there's a lot of new residential products being built as we speak and a lot of other improvements along that urban renewal area that are that's increasing property tax value. And that money is already coming to the Urban Renewal Authority. Because if you remember back in two thousand and sixteen, we started the clocks on all of our urban renewal areas. So all the property tax increment is coming to the Urban Renewal Authority. So they can use that to issue a bond and get cash today to finish some projects. Money is really cheap right now and it's really a good time to do it. So in order to get these G Line Station projects done sooner than later, as we promised the voters that we would, and we're working on a lot of these projects in partnership with the city of Arvada, especially Fifty Second Avenue and Ridge Road. Arvada has a very large residential project, the Haskin Station, that's going to be going in just east of our G Line Station very soon. So those roads are going to get used more and more over the next couple of years. So the the Urban Authority last Tuesday agreed to issue bonds. They have a bond council, bond attorney who've who've evaluated what the capacity would be. And they can generate about thirty-one million dollars in in bond proceeds, which priority in my mind would be the ten million for the G Line Station projects to get those done. But there's also many other maintenance and capital projects in the I seventy Kipling Corridor urban renewal area that need completed, that haven't been finished. An example of one that's been that was put on hold because of Covid and our budget concerns was the Thirty-Eighth Avenue and Kipling interchange improvements. As you all know, that's if you drive through there, that interchange is getting busier and busier with some of the development around there. And we already have that project designed that's shovel-ready. It's probably about a million-dollar project. That that would just be an example of another project that this bond could help fund. So the Urban Authority is is moving forward and Janice is on the Urban Authority, Councilmember Hoppy, sorry. And she can speak to this if she'd like, but they gave us direction to move forward. They could potentially issue the bonds by June of this year and have the funding available to start those projects up at the G Line Station. Any questions about that? There was a lot of information I threw out there, but it's a good thing. It's 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 a new new funding opportunity for the city to get some projects done. And I think it's a good time to do it. Money is really cheap right now. It's Urban Authority suggested that we we get as much, get the highest bond as we could because we don't know what the rates are going to do in the next couple of years. But Ms. Hoppy, did you have anything to add to that?
One of the things I do, I would just like to mention that, yeah, everybody on the Board of Urban Renewal was in agreement that this was a good opportunity and in a little bit creative opportunity but for us to take advantage of this time and to be able to get some of these projects in our community done faster, sooner than later. And so, you know, we look forward to, Urban Renewal looks forward to partnering with the city and getting that work done.
And then when the when the developer of the Clear Creek Crossing project does pay the city back, hopefully again, towards the end of next year, that money will be free and clear and city council can decide how to use that ten million dollars. It does not have to go back into any specific projects. So Urban Authority is is doing the city council a favor and and you'll get a free ten million dollars to spend in a couple of years on some other projects if you'd like. So that was one big update I'd like to give. The other couple, another update is other additional funding opportunities that we're looking at right now. I believe most of you have heard or we've told you a little bit, Congress has brought back earmarks. They're actually calling them community funding projects at this point. And we received an application from Congressman Pearl Mutter's office to submit for a project. And we did submit a couple of weeks ago for ten million dollars for phase two of the Wadsworth Improvement Project. That's the amount that we believe we need for phase two. We feel it's probably a pretty good project, but we did submit that to Pearl Mutter's office. So we're hoping to hear something soon in the next few months if we get those dollars. The state has also provided thirty million dollars of new funding for Main Street revitalization projects. And staff has participated in webinars over the last couple of weeks to learn more about the application process. We can submit. We can submit one application for a safety-related project up to two million dollars and multiple applications for up to two hundred thousand for what they're calling COVID-related impact projects. So we are looking at submitting applications for both of those pots of funding here very soon. And then the third funding opportunity is the American Rescue Plan. Wheat Ridge is still projected to receive about six point seven million dollars from that, from Congress, half this year, half next year. But we're still waiting for Treasury Department guidance. There there's a little bit of confusion confusion on how those monies can be used. We've been participating in in numerous webinars and and calls last week with Senator Bennett and Senator Hickelberger and Congressman Pearl Mutter. And and we're all still kind of just waiting for the Treasury Department guidance because there's it's it's a little confusing on exactly how we can use those dollars. But we definitely are going to get probably about six point seven million over the over the next two years. Any questions on any of those? If not, I will jump into the homeless issues as as the mayor promised, we would speak about that this evening. You know, I know, I know you've all been hearing more and more from your constituents recently concerning our homelessness issues in Wheat Ridge. And we all understand it it's an issue, and and people are frustrated by it, like as you can hear from some of the comments this evening. But I want to provide you with some updates of what we're doing because we are doing quite a bit. But first of all, I just want to mention again, and I know you all know this, we've been we've been telling telling you this for the last few years that homelessness, it's it's not illegal or criminal to be homeless. So homelessness is not solely a policing issue, but it's it's rather a a community-wide issue, right? We can't, we can't just call the police department and expect that they're going to make this problem go away because that's not going to happen. It's a very complex issue. And it's it's unfortunate, and it's come to Wheat Ridge also, which is unfortunate. But homelessness has been increasing across most of the country, and COVID pandemic has made it worse. And as I said, Wheat Ridge has not been spared from this issue. But fortunately, there's there's numerous regional and local efforts underway to help address some of the issues associated with homelessness. First of all, Heading Home is a committee. That's it's a subcommittee that's part of the Jepco Connections, which is is part of Jefferson County. Their vision is creating a systemic response in Jefferson County to prevent and end homelessness wherever possible. Heading Home is a collaboration of over thirty two governments, including Wheat Ridge, nonprofits, faith-based organizations in Jefferson County. We've invited Heading Home to our May seventeenth study session to provide an update to City Council and the community. They have an action plan with some specific strategies that I think are are great. Unfortunately, they're going to take a while. Those aren't immediate solutions. But their four overriding objectives of Heading Home are to optimize the housing crisis resolution system, figure out, basically figuring out how to get people into housing, increase access to and supply of supportive housing units, improve system-wide data collection and data sharing, and increase community involvement in support of homelessness solutions. And they also have some immediate priorities that they're working on, which was part of their sheltering gap analysis that they just completed. So some of their immediate priorities that they're they're really focusing on are creating at least at least two navigation centers in Jefferson County that will provide support services to those experiencing homelessness. And there's a couple of locations in in Wheat Ridge that they're actually looking at and working with staff to see if those would work. Creating a collaborative street outreach team to develop relationships with those living outdoors to ensure these individuals are connected with housing and health services. Creating a motel-based emergency sheltering for families and children. And then working with existing sheltering programs to lower the barriers to entry for homeless individuals. Unfortunately, in Jefferson County, we don't have many sheltering options. So it's it's very difficult to find emergency sheltering options for some of these folks. Jefferson County has also recently formed its own, what they're calling Built for Zero team. They're working with the the larger Denver Metro Regional efforts to measurably and sustainably end chronic and veteran homelessness. I know I believe the mayor and I believe Councilmember Holtine, I believe, was on a webinar about that several weeks ago. And we have our own team here in Jefferson County that I'm part of. And this is a nationwide program that has seen success in many states across the country. And they're hoping that this was will hopefully can bring some improvements to the Denver metro area. Wheat Ridge is also partnering in a countywide homeless navigation model, which is comprised of six municipal and county-based housing navigators. Rebecca is our is our navigator, which I believe you've met. And these folks assist those experiencing a housing crisis, find stable housing and and obtain the services and resources needed to maintain that housing. It's really an on-the-ground effort to get to know our homeless individuals in in the community, build their trust so that they will accept some help from us. So Rebecca's had some initial success. I think she's working, she's got three folks into some type of housing, and she's, I think she has an active caseload of over twenty right now, folks that she's working with, trying to to find them services. So that's some of the the regional things we're doing and partnerships we're working on. But also, the Wheat Ridge staff is is really putting a lot of efforts into this. And I want to go over some of those efforts that we're working on, too. First of all, City Council, as you know, prioritized homelessness as as a priority in your strategic plan this year. We're we're going to come back to City Council in May and August with updates on on that issue, on that priority. We're going to be beefing up staffing this the spring and summer to deal with homelessness issues. We have school resource officers who will, once school is is over in the first of June, I guess, the chief is going to to reassign the school resource officers plus an additional officer to work with Officer Brian Gross. And we're going to complete a dedicated homeless team in the police department that is going to focus just on homeless issues, specifically in I seventy Kipling and Thirty Eighth and Wads and any other area that we may have. We're going to have green belts, Clickrick, Clickrick Green Belt extra duty for our police officers this summer and Park Rangers that we're hiring this summer. The chief would also like to potentially bring on a third park ranger, which we may need additional resources from council for that. Our traffic team in the police department, all of their unallocated time, they're going to spend at I seventeen Kipling this summer just to provide more resources up there. They're applying for other, a couple of different grants that will provide additional overtime for officers who will be focusing on homelessness issues. Our Parks Department is going to be hiring some additional seasonal staff this this summer who are skilled and trained in biohazard cleanups that that so that they can help with some of the cleanups in some of these camps. There's a lot of needles and other biohazards that come that are associated with some of these areas. We do regular cleanups in cooperation with CDOT in in the CDOT corridor areas. Our next cleanup with them is April twentieth. We do at least a monthly cleanup with them. There was a couple canceled over the winter because of of snow events, and CDOT had to reallocate their staff to dealing with the snow. But we're hoping probably in the summer months, we'll probably even do more than one a month with CDOT. If the CDOT staff is available, they have to reallocate their staff to to make this work also. Almost finished here, guys. We're also looking at some landscape design options in in different areas of the city, specifically at the I seventy Kipling Corridor to discourage camping and loitering. There's certain landscape techniques, you can put different types of riprap and things, so it discourages people from camping. We are, our Parks Department is going to hire a third-party contractor this summer to do twice monthly cleanups in the troubled areas, which will supplement supplement all the other cleanups that are being being done. That's probably about a forty thousand dollar expense. We don't have the final contract yet, but don't have that budgeted, but I will find the money in this year's budget. We're working with many different volunteer groups to do cleanups along these corridors. I know our mayor and our previous mayor and myself and Parks and Rec Director, we all did cleanup along Kipling. So we're really hoping that we can get more volunteer groups. Local Works has committed to volunteering on a regular basis along these corridors and in the green belt. So we're we're thankful for those volunteers and community support. A Public Works Department is has a regular street sweeping schedule for this I seventy Kipling area. Last few few weeks, there there's still snow and under some of these underpasses because it's shading and never melted. So we didn't get in there as much to clean up, but that's going to be almost a weekly thing during the summer to make sure that we're keeping the streets cleaned. We've been, we've been adding more trash barrels around the city, and staff empties those on a regular basis. We're also accepting donations through our community foundation for our navigation program. And we have been getting some money, so that's great. That helps us provide resources for these, some of these homeless folks. And finally, we do, the city in this year's budget, we are contributing probably over two hundred thousand to different area nonprofits and agencies that assist with homeless, mental health addiction, and family service issues in Wheat Ridge. So in in addition to all the other staff time and and the other things that we're doing that obviously costs the city money, we we do have about two hundred thousand in just cash contributions to these different agencies that are addressing some of these problems for us, too. So with that, I'll take a breath and turn it back to to you, Mayor, and and see if there's any questions for us.
Okay, thank you. And before before we go to any questions, I'd like to to also say that I've asked, I've asked Patrick to organize the city staff to to convene a community conversation on homelessness so that we can so that we can sometime this spring, bring our bring our community members together, bring these individuals in our the assets that we have, the Navigator Program, Heading Home, our Cold Weather Shelter Network, and other experts in the field, join us so that we are able to really further understand how these issues occur, how how we might address them, what impacts they have in our community, and be able to not only disseminate information, but also seek inquiries from our public. And so that look for a community conversation on homelessness. Any questions for Mr. Goff? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Goff, for your report. We'll go now to City Attorney's Matters, Mr. Dahl.
Nothing tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. We will now go to elected officials matters, and I will start with our clerk, Clerk Kirkpatrick.
I have nothing tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks so much. I don't see Mr. Treasurer, Mr. Miller on the on the call, but if he's here, but I I don't see him. Okay, then Ms. Nosler Beck.
Thanks, Mayor. Wanted to remind everybody that Mayor Protem Hoppy and I are hosting a Lessons Learned and a Path Forward conversation tomorrow as a virtual town hall at six P M. So please join us. We're going to have lots of great people there to ask questions and also hear some updates. Dr. Comstock will be there from Jefferson County Public Health. Treasurer, County Treasurer Jerry DeTulio will be there. Susan Miller from the Jefferson County School Board will be there. And we'll have our own Parks and Rec Director Karen will be there. I think Ally is going to be joining us, and we'll be providing a bunch of updates so that we can figure out how things are going to look as we head into what's looking like year two of COVID. So please join us. And the other thing I just wanted to quickly address is thank you to our our community that's been reaching out about so many issues that have been been impacting all of our neighborhoods, specifically in regards to homelessness. I've heard about so many people's concerns that they have for their fellow neighbors and for our property and for our safety. And I just want to make sure that you know that we're we're here to help. We're going to solve this somehow in a way that, you know, moves us all forward together. So thank you so much, Patrick, for all of the updates that you provided. And I'm really, really looking forward to that conversation that you you mentioned, Mayor. So thank you for coming up with that.
Thank you, Ms. Nosler Beck. Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to echo Councilmember Nosler Beck's comments regarding the constituents that have been reaching out regarding this homelessness issue. And I I don't think it's so much, I mean, and we of course have to address the issue of homelessness, but a lot of the complaints from the community has been regarding trash, camping where it's not allowed. You know, we've recognized that the needles have been an issue and that some of our residents aren't feeling safe, whether that's walking along the green belt or their kids heading to school. And and that's really important for our constituents to feel safe in their neighborhoods. So I just want to thank city staff and especially the Wheat Ridge Police Department for for everything that they've been doing to address this issue. I've had wonderful conversations with Chief Murtha, and I look forward to continuing those conversations with my fellow councilmembers, our residents, and city staff. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dozeman. Mr. Stikes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I won't add very much, but I'll echo what the councilpeople from District Four said. I definitely appreciate when we have so many people reach out about not just any topic, but any topic, but to to help give advice and 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 help us with that. It it really does help when the citizens reach out and give give opinions and and make sure that we're we're paying attention to that stuff. And thank you to the staff for, as you know, Patrick had a lot of things that that we are doing. And, you know, obviously, we want to do more, but we're always open to that feedback. So and one of the best ways is to support local businesses. So if you can find it, find it, buy it, Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just curious, per Mr. DeTulio's request earlier, if the HRE program has been put on a study session date.
Ms. Hoppy.
It is on the future study session list. It has not yet been scheduled, though, Councilwoman Weaver. I will reach out to you when we get it scheduled so we can get more backup and information from you about what you would like to see in that study session.
Great. Thank you very much. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holtine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I want to thank Patrick. Most of your comments felt a little bit like Christmas morning. It sounds like we've got a lot of exciting opportunities coming up, and I look forward to hearing more about what we'll be doing with those. A couple of things for me. One, I am hosting my every other month District Two Coffee Chat this Saturday from nine thirty to ten thirty. You know, my annual meeting is a little bit more of an information dump. This is much more question and answer and conversational. So I really hope District Two folks will will join us. It's via Zoom from nine thirty to ten thirty. And I look forward to hearing your your questions, your comments, your concerns, your big ideas. And then I I just wanted to thank our city clerk. I really appreciate the speed at which minutes are turned around and not only turned around for our approval, but actually uploaded on the city website. I had a neighbor actually stop me the other day to who who follows these things and just really appreciated that. And I appreciate that, and I think there's a lot of people probably appreciate it that we'll never hear from, but it does make a difference. And I think that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to say thank you to the city staff and the police department and all those involved in our response to the homeless issue. And all the work that they've done is important to recognize because while there's been sort of a recent uproar on this issue, this work's been done over many years to address this issue. And it seems to be a little bit more visible nowadays as it as compared to what it was in the past. But I think our city has done a great job at both addressing the immediate needs of homelessness while also addressing the larger issue of mental health issues and affordable housing. So I think we're doing a great job. We just need to keep at it, and thanks for all the hard work.
Thank you. Ms. Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to also thank the police department and the city for what they are doing regarding homelessness. It is actually happening in my own neighborhood, which has never happened before. The neighbors are absolutely terrified. And I mean, I And I mean, I can't minimize that because we haven't had it before. So it's not like it's on a main corridor. We're talking in the very middle of neighborhoods that these, this kind of thing is happening. And cars stopping outside of homes at night and getting out of the cars and walking around houses. If, you know, you've lived here for a long time, you're not used to that. And so it is, that's our reality. And that is something to where we have to be very aware of our surroundings and what's going on so that we can all stay safe. So it's not just on the corridor, corridors. It's in the middle of neighborhoods now. So I do hope that we can, you know, get a handle on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to share a personal story about an experience that I have with a homeless, one of our homeless community members. And we'll call him V. And he, I, I track him often. He's around some areas that I frequent. And you know, typically check in with him to see how things are going. He, about a month ago told me, I, I asked V, you know, how are things going? And you could actually see the light beaming off of his face when he said, I have a navigator now. And her name's Rebecca and she is helping me and we're moving through this, but it's a slow process. And so here's the thing, he's trying to move through this. It's been a month. He doesn't have his appointment for his ID until the 14th. This man has to keep himself safe and in this area while living on the streets until he can get these services. So this is not something that happens overnight. And in conversation I had with him the other day, because I noticed he had been gone for a week, his foot got ran over. So now he is trying to walk through our community with a cast on his foot because his ankle is broken. Trying to make his appointments with his navigator while also trying to get his ID, while also trying to stay safe on the streets. And an incident had happened where there was a lot of graffiti and trash. And he said, I really am upset because I don't like that kind of business in my neighborhood. So even though he doesn't own a home in our neighborhood, he still considers it his neighborhood. And so I just would really like people to try to remember that this is not something we can snap our finger and get people into homes. And even if we were able to snap our finger and get people into homes, then they may have mental health issues that don't make them feel safe there. And they only feel safe when they're in a place that they create. So it's not just homelessness. It's also mental health that we need to address. And I look forward to addressing this in our priorities on May 3rd, because it's going to take money. And we need to be ready to open our wallets for this one. And so I appreciate everything that the staff is doing. I appreciate everything that the police department's doing. And I appreciate people's feelings that they're feeling unsafe. But please remember that some of these people are also feeling unsafe and they're trying really hard. So with that, I'd just like to say, thanks for all of the work that staff's doing on this issue.
Thank you, Ms. Hoppy. Chief Murtha, you are faithful to join us in these meetings. I don't regularly give you an opportunity to, to speak, but I want to extend the floor to you tonight. If you would like to have anything that you'd like to say.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's probably smarter you not to give me the floor too often. Probably in your best interest, but I, I do, I am encouraged tonight. Thank you for this, the support to your police department. We work for you and the citizens, especially around the issues for persons experiencing homelessness. I sort of latched on to what Councilmember Hoppy just said. Because I, we get a lot of complaints about feelings of unsafe, feelings of this, that, or the other thing. And some of it is reality and some of it is true and some of it is just how people feel. So we have to, a very complex situation we're trying to navigate. But we are trying to treat everybody with dignity and respect and trying to make sure that we don't over-police a population of people who are struggling to make it. So we are balancing those things. Mr. Goff laid out some of what we plan to do. But what we don't plan to do is we don't plan to become an occupying force in, in I-70 Kipling. We plan on partnering with city government. We plan on working together. We will resolve issues around disorder and criminal behavior. And we will work very hard to bring resources to the, to the, to the people who, who need it out there. And we will, we will be good partners in this. I hope people don't think of the police first every time they see a homeless person. I hope they think of government and how government might work to solve it. And I'm encouraged by the words everybody spoke tonight. And yes, probably there's going to be a budgetary hit at some point in time. But you, your officers who are out there, Officer Gross was mentioned tonight, the officers who will help him. Their marching orders are to go out, make contacts, try and help the people we can help, keep them safe from those people who might do them harm. But also make sure that the ones who are out there causing disorder are held accountable to the best of our ability in a COVID environment. So that's the balance. That's what I continue to promise to this group. And we'll continue to, to work with you to, to make sure the messaging to the citizens is, is as you want it, that we're, we're listening, we hear you and we're working hard for you. So thank you for the platform, Mr. Mayor. Counsel, thank you for your support. Ms. Hutchinson, I know I spoke to you, at least by, you know, by email. Thank you for the information on that situation. Ms. Nosler Beck, thank you for the calls on those situations. So feel free to call me. That's what I'm here for. We want to provide leadership. That's what the police department does. We may not be the first name in, in resolving homelessness issues, but we do want to be part of the solution. So please feel free to call me, reach out anytime you have an issue that concerns you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Chief. And I want to thank everyone who, who came tonight and has communicated with us and council. We, we hear these issues. We appreciate your concerns. Mr. Goff laid out some of the plans that we have that we hope to, to be able to, to strike out and, and address this issue of homelessness and people experiencing homelessness. And the impacts that it has on our community. And as we've been saying in this pandemic, together we will get through this. And it will take all of us working together to address this issue of citizens that experiencing homelessness. And I hope that the, that the ideas that we've put forward, I hope that we're able to have a robust conversation on homelessness, that all of our community members can, can engage in. And that we can work together to, to solve this. I want to thank all of the, all of the speakers that came and, and spoke on behalf of the, the smoking issue. I think we've made some great progress there. I want to say on a personal note, to thank the, the people that attended my Saturday coffee with the mayor. We did, we did run sort of long on time and this was a, this was not sort of a question and answer format, which I had, which happens on some occasions with my coffees. We had a presentation by Mr. Goff. When the time ran, we ran out of time. And I believe there was one attendee who wanted to, to have some more question and answer. And I may have prematurely cut off the conversation and I want to apologize. It was certainly not my intention not to honor anyone that, that wanted to speak at that meeting. So please accept my apologies. I believe we have no more business to come before the council tonight. I want to thank you all for joining us and we will adjourn our meeting. So thank you all. Good night and have a good week.